The Monday, October 27th, meeting of the Marquette City Commission is now called to order at 6:00 PM. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, in the physical with liberty and justice.
City Clerk, may I have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Present.
Commissioner Gottlieb.
Present.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Mayor.
Here.
Commissioner Otteaway.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Schlegel.
Here.
And Mayor Hanley.
Here. Commissioners, we have an agenda in front of us. Do we have a motion on the agenda? Commissioner Davis?
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Gottlieb?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven to zero. I have one announcement tonight. The next meeting of the City Commission will not take place on the second Tuesday as it has in the past. It will be on November 17th at 6:00 PM in, right here in City Hall. This is due to the new state regulations that we have certified elections before we seat a new commission, so we have to wait a week till we can get certified results from the county. That, with that, we will move on to boards and committees. I have two appointments. Commissioners, do I have a motion on the appointments? Commissioner Gottlieb?
I move to appoint Joy Unruly to the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee for an unexpired term ending June 1st, 2028.
You can do both of them, yeah.
As well as Jacob Guter to the Planning Commission for the unexpired term ending February 15th, 2026, and the subsequent term ending February 15th, 2029.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Otteaway?
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you to the applicants, as usual. It's always hard to get all of these boards and committees filled, as you see when you walk in. We have so many vacancies that I know all of you who are here tonight are probably aware of because you've probably been told that repeatedly. So thank you to the people who've stepped up here. It's been great.
Anyone else with discussion? I just want to thank both of these applicants. Not everyone in the audience will have looked at their resumes, but they are both very fitting for these roles, and I'm very excited to have them on each of these commissions. With that, I'll move to a vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven to zero. This brings us to our first public comment portion of the evening. Public comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when speaking, and remember that the time for commissioners to respond to your comments is at the end of the meeting. Also, if you have comments on the public hearings, you will have time during the public hearing to speak on those, if you would like specifically as well. With that, do we have anyone for public comment? Anyone for public comment? Seeing none, public comment will be closed, which brings us to our presentations for the evening. The first one of the night will be the Citizens Academy Fall 2025 Graduation, and Annie would like to join us to do that.
Everybody, I'm very excited to be here graduating our third cohort of the Marquette Citizens Academy. We started with our first cohort in fall of 2024. We did another one in the spring, and this is our third Fall 2025. We had a total of 10 sessions over the course of 10 weeks with four tours of different city facilities and presentations from department heads around the city doing tours of the motor pool, the wastewater treatment plant, the fire department, and the police department, which were all very educational. And I'm very excited. We have 14 graduating participants, 12 of which are here today in their beautiful sweatshirts. And I'd like to encourage anyone here who's interested in applying for a future cohort to go online to marquettemi.gov/citizensacademy or reach out to the city manager's office. This is a really wonderful program, and I'm glad to see that we still have interest in it even after running our third cohort, all full of over 14 participants or 14. So with that, I'd like to invite Mayor Hanley to do our certificates.
I'll take a photo.
And by that, you butcher the names. Yeah, I think I've got the first one down. I'll have to wait for Annie. She wants to take. Good? All right, Molly Black. Thank you. Three Bernas. Helen Goke. Uh-oh. Ciara Hull. Ron Hull. Kendall Mintic. Bodie Parker Ledesma. Natalie Peterson. John Reynolds. Susan Reynolds. Mary Smedman. And Bernadette Wallace. Good to see you again.
Okay, thank you again to everyone who participated. If I can have the graduates meet me in the hallway for a picture.
And can I say thank you?
Wait, wait, before you guys leave, I think the commission probably wants to talk to Justice Snitch, but you can say whatever you want.
I got excited, sorry.
Commissioners, do you have any comments? Commissioner Davis?
I just want to thank you because I know that 10 weeks is a long time, and I suspect that department heads were so excited about talking to you that they spent more than two hours. So it's a big commitment that you made, and now we have 14 more people that know a lot about our city. And so thank you so much for spending the time, and thank you for your interest.
Any other commissioners with comments?
I would like to say again, following what Commissioner Davis said, thank you all for the commitment of learning about the city. I really hope that after doing this, you join some of our wonderful boards and committees with all of their openings, as you are now very educated on what we do in the city, and we could really use people like you to keep us going forward. And I also, as I did last time, want to thank Commissioner Davis for the idea for this. This is a great thing. And we're now doing a staff academy, which is going on, which is also a really wonderful event. So I'm really liking how educated we're making not only our citizens but our staff about jobs that they may not do every day. So thank you, guys, all for participating.
Okay.
Okay, this brings us to our second presentation of the evening. This is from the Local Officers' Compensation Committee by Stephen Swentek. Stephen?
First of all, thank you. Let's see if I get this started properly. Oh, I already went one too far. Okay, it started automatically. Our committee is set up of supposedly seven members. Currently, we have only three, which you can see here. I'm not going to read all the slides. I'm going to paraphrase as best I can. So you can see we have room if anybody's interested. The purpose of this committee is we review the elected officers for the city, which are your city commissioners, your mayors, and your Board of Light and Power and the Power Chair positions, and recommend every odd year for their, what compensation should be. This year, as has been in the past, the liaison, which is Wendy, does some polling and gets information supplied to the, to our board as well as the elected officials. And then it's reviewed at our biannual meeting, which was August 21st this year. And we recommend the following. All compensation is basically recommended the same as it has been in the past with the commission, city commissioners being 7,900 each, the mayor 11,000, the Board of Light and Power positions 4,300, and the Board of Light and Power Chair 4,800. As I already stated, this, we're obligated to meet the odd number of years, which is every other year, and our current goal is to fill the existing four empty chairs that we have on our board. With that, entertain any questions or comments or issues?
Commissioners, do we have any questions or comments? Commissioner Gottlieb?
Yes, I want to thank you for doing that. It's got to be pretty tough to evaluate the City Commission and the BLP, and I don't envy that job. So thank you very much for doing it, especially with such a small group.
Yeah, I think that's the hardest part is, you know, with more people, you get better input. Just a personal thought there. That's all.
Any other commissioners? Okay, thank you so much for coming tonight, Stephen. With that, it brings us to our public hearings. We have two public hearings tonight, the first of which is the CDBG closeout. City Clerk, can you please read the background?
Thank you, Mayor. The city of Marquette was the recipient of a community development block grant fund to assist with the demolition of a portion of the former Marquette General Hospital. These funds were distributed to the Northern Michigan University Foundation, the property owner, and the project manager to provide for the removal of portions of the former hospital campus that were affected by blight and disuse. The specific demolition funded by these funds are the buildings that were bounded by College Avenue, Magnetic Street, Hebert Court, and 7th Street with the addition of the bridge building. This public hearing was scheduled at the October 14th, 2025 City Commission meeting, and the notice was published according to the required guidelines. Fiscal effect, none by this action. Recommendation, approve the resolution acknowledging the closeout of the CDBG project and authorize the mayor to sign. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Before I open this public hearing, Sean Hobbitz, our deputy city manager, is going to do a quick presentation on this.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yep, I was going to do a short presentation to kind of go over what this grant was, what it funded, and what the results were. The city of Marquette received a community development block grant, or CDBG, grant in 2023 in the amount of $8,030,000. The point of this was to assist with the demolition of a portion of the former Marquette General Hospital campus. We were successful in lobbying the state through the MDC for these funds, and it was a pretty significant benefit to our community to be able to get that. External funding to help remove a significant issue we were having in our city. During the demolition project, the property was owned by the NMU Foundation, who contracted with the Adamo Group, Detroit-based demolition firm, to conduct the actual demolition. The city functionally served as a pass-through for these funds. We monitored basically the pay requests from the NMU Foundation, transmitted them to the state, the state reviewed them, sent the payment back to us, and we delivered the payment back to the NMU Foundation, who paid their contractor. So we weren't doing the on-the-ground demolition management that was done with the NMU Foundation, Tri Media, and Adamo Group. But these funds were a significant portion of getting that property down. In total, the project spent $8,03,951 in CDBG funds with an additional $1.4 million kicked in from the NMU Foundation. Our amount of CDBG funds is slightly less than the total grant award, just as a result of some of the end-of-grant accounting. But the city of Marquette didn't spend any dollars on this project. We facilitated this grant funding, and the NMU Foundation came up with the remainder. We split this project into two phases. The first was the CDBG project, or Phase One, as we kind of referred it to as, and that was everything on the south side of College Avenue, and was later amended to include the bridge building because of the way those buildings were structurally connected. We couldn't get rid of everything south of College Avenue without causing the bridge building to collapse, so we rolled the bridge building right into that project. Phase One demolition commenced in summer of 2023 and was certified as concluded in December of 2024. That didn't mean the whole demolition project was completed in December of 2024. That just meant our first phase was completed then. The primary activities for this grant were demolition, obviously, asbestos abatement, which I think ended up costing more than actual building teardown. There were a significant amount of asbestos in the very old buildings that were on our half of the site, and then site restoration at the end. This is the former MGH campus, as you used to see it, looking at it from College Avenue. Everything on the left is what we considered Phase One of this project, and later amended to include that bridge building in the middle. Everything on the right was a separate, different project. None of the demolition on the right commenced until our portion of the project was completed. So this is what we started with, and I'm very grateful to the community members who actively pursue their drone photography habits, because I got to watch all this demolition unfold in very good detail, and it was really cool to see. So I pull these pictures off of Facebook where Greg Carrier shared them, so I just wanted to say thank you to Greg. I do not know him, but I did look at a lot of your pictures over the past few years, and they're very cool. So we're on the other side of the campus from this picture. So now everything on the right is what we're talking about for our project. You can see just on the very right-hand side of this picture, demolition had started with the emergency room, tractors are set up, College Avenue was closed. We move on to demolition in progress. You know, this kind of looks like a war zone a little bit. I don't think any of us were happy to see, you know, this amount of rubble and building being torn down while it was in progress, even though it was a very, very good thing that this was happening. The bridge building, like I said, the grant was amended to include that bridge building, and taking that down was a significant undertaking. The building on the left here that you see that's still standing, this elevator tower, that was the building that we determined could not come down without causing the bridge building to collapse. So that's why we had to amend the grant, include the bridge building, take out the bridge building, and then finally remove that elevator tower, because we didn't want to risk causing the rest of the facility to collapse if the bridge building went down with it. So it was done very, very carefully, very, very efficiently, and it was a very successful demolition project. This is Phase One substantially complete. They're still doing a little bit of site remediation work in the top of this picture, but this grassy field is the result of a successful, about nine and a half million dollar project. And this is kind of where we're at today, after the additional phases of the project were completed, a blank canvas for redevelopment. That's all I got.
Thank you so much. With that, I will open the public hearing. Members of the public who wish to comment on the public hearing have three minutes to do so. Please state your name and physical address when speaking. Do I have anyone who would like to speak for the public hearing? This is the public hearing about the CDBG grant. If you would like to speak about that, okay. Anyone who would like to speak about the public hearing? With that, the public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Davis?
I move we approve the resolution acknowledging the closeout of the CDBG project and authorize the mayor to sign.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Mayor? Any discussion?
You know, I didn't think I was going to say anything about this, but Sean, you kind of brought me through some almost emotional things. I spent 27 years working there. Every time a building came down, I'd be like, well, there goes another one of my offices. But I really like driving by that site now, and I'm really looking forward to what happens next.
Any other commissioners?
I was just going to say, you know, I think it's, the site in general's come a very long way in the last three years, and it's really great use of those grant funding, and I really appreciate staff managing that grant, because I know it was kind of a beast to manage. So, thank you.
Pro Tem Schlegel?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thanks for that effort, too. I know how much work staff had to put into that. It was very demanding, a lot of hours. Also, just because I was at the hearing originally when this was getting started, I think one of the important parts about that whole destruction was, maybe you can give me a better number, but I thought it was over 80% of that building was recycled. All of everything that came through there was recycled. Is that correct? Roundabout, does anybody remember a number?
Yeah, I believe, I don't have it offhand, but I believe they were able to recycle over 90% of the material, whether through reuse, through infill, or scrap. It was pretty successful in that regard. They didn't recycle the asbestos.
If memory does serve me correctly, though, they did, they did have a contractor that was able to recycle a lot of like the concrete and things like that, and they took it off-site so that residents weren't hearing the grinding and everything they had to do to repurpose that material, but.
Yeah. So my reason for just bringing it up is, you know, when you look at something and you think about our landfills and things along those lines, the fact that something that was that, you know, extensive could be recycled to that degree is really something to be proud of. Not only from the contractor's component, you know, and everything that they should be tooting their own horn on for their next job, but really for our community and what it means for, you know, surrounding, whether it's our landfill or somewhere else that it's going. It's just, it's pretty exciting to see that. Thank you.
Any other commissioners? With that, City Clerk, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Gottlieb?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Otteaway?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Schlegel?
Yes.
And Mayor Hanley?
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. This brings us to our second public hearing of the evening. Ordinance number 25-13, conditional rezoning for the 1700 Division Street. City Clerk, may I please have the background?
Thank you, Mayor. The city recently received a request to conditionally rezone the property at 1700 Division Street from mixed use to general commercial with conditional rezoning. Pursuant to the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, MCL 125.3405, an owner of land may voluntarily offer in writing, and the local unit of government may approve, certain use and development of the land as a condition to a rezoning of the land or an amendment to a zoning map. On September 16th, 2025, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing and discussed the proposed rezoning in accordance with procedures established in the Land Development Code for evaluating rezoning requests. The following motion was made to recommend approval of the request. It was moved by S. Lowry, seconded by D. Fetter, and carried five to zero that after conducting a public hearing and review of the application and staff report analysis for 01-REZ-09-25, the Planning Commission finds that the proposed rezoning with conditions is consistent with the Community Master Plan and meets the requirements of the Land Development Code, Section 54.1405, and hereby recommends that the City Commission approve 01-REZ-09-25 as presented. The conditional rezoning application, staff file, review, and analysis, and minutes of the September 16th, 2025 meeting are attached. A conditional rezoning agreement will need to be drafted and approved. Fiscal effect, none. Recommendation, following the public hearing, adopt ordinance 25-13, rezoning 1700 Division Street from mixed use to general commercial with conditional rezoning as recommended by the Planning Commission. Direct the city attorney to draft a conditional rezoning agreement and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the ordinance. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you. With that, I will open the public hearing. Members of the public wishing to make comment on this public hearing have three minutes to do so. Please state your name and physical address when speaking, and anyone who... Please state your name and physical address when speaking, and anyone who would like to can approach the podium. Do we have anyone to comment on the public hearing?
My wife and I, Tanda Jennings, live at four hundred Stone Quarry Drive, one hundred feet from this property. We've been there for twenty-one years. We have been surprised by towers going up in our neighborhood as close as fifteen feet from the homes, power towers. Now it looks like an industrial site. Now, this commission has an opportunity to allow other businesses to come into our residential area. As nice as this young man is, as smart as this man is, I think he's a great guy, it's the wrong place. Ms. Davis goes by there every day. She's in our neighborhood. So now we have a situation where some of the homes will be literally fifty feet from the properties, fifty feet out their windows, and there's going to be a twenty-five-foot buffer, and those trees that is a buffer are going to lose their leaves. And what will we be looking at? We'll be looking at metal buildings, lights across fifty feet. Now, we, as members of this community, we all pay taxes. We pay over six thousand dollars to live here. There's probably over fifty homes that are going to be directly affected by this. I'm not talking about the trailer park, I'm talking about homes, individuals. Now, there's fifty of us, and there's one businessman, nice guy, but in the wrong place. We sat, and he presented to us a very nice proposal, if it was someplace else. Now, this commission can go ahead and continue to have industrial-looking complexes in this area, but yet we have converted, over the years, as a city, homes in a residential So I'm asking you to consider stopping this now, put in a professional building in there, put in a dental office there. We're going to look at storage buildings? He says he's got a nice color green, matches his car. That may be the case, but it's still in the wrong place. So I'm asking you to consider us residents, fifty-plus, fifty individual homes have rights to. Who do you represent? Us, or one person? Thank you.
Do I have anyone else wishing to comment on the public hearing?
Go ahead, if you want to go first.
My name's Paula McCormick. I live at four-six-eight Stone Quarry Drive in the Meadows subdivision, right off Division. And we're right around the corner from the parcel of land that is proposed to be rezoned. And I'm kind of surprised to hear that the City Zoning Commission, which several of us attended, thought that that was consistent with the Marquette's vision and master plan. I'm a little, you know, surprised about that because I guess it's a matter of interpretation in how you read the Marquette city's vision for its master plan, but I am opposed to that. I think I might be one of probably thirty-plus homeowners right within the vicinity of that parcel. And as I see it, Fuller's Landscaping ends really where that commercial area is along Division. So you have Merseydotes, you have U.P. Tax Service, you have Fuller's Landscaping. And Fuller's does a really nice job at keeping their land, their lawn all mowed and green that leads right into a residential corridor right from that point on. So right from Fuller's, everything else is residential, all the way down Division. You have Stone Quarry Drive, you have two streets leading into the Shyras condominiums, you have Shyras Hills, you could keep going way down Division, that turns into another residential area, down Pioneer, which is residential. That's like a thoroughfare or a corridor into all these residential communities. So I guess Division Street as it is, in my opinion, is a pretty unattractive street. And I think a big, huge, multi-unit, ninety to a hundred individual storage units, great big, long buildings, just adds to the unattractive look to a great, big, huge corridor to residential neighborhoods with kids, elderly people living there, working people, families. It's just not conducive to the neighborhood whatsoever. I would say that, according to Marquette's master plan, it should be developed with businesses to embrace the residential nature of that area of town, not make it look, in my opinion, uglier or worse. There's a beautiful, there's woods, beautiful parcel of land, I think. There's woods, there's a creek that should be appreciated more than it is. Wildlife, I think the zoning should work towards being more residentially friendly. And actually, I think there's three classifications of residential.
Your time is up.
Oh, anyway, I'm not in favor of that. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Logan Stauber, two Pinehurst Drive, Marquette, Michigan, but also owner of LMS Ventures. The applicant tonight, I just wanted to say thank you all for your review. From my perspective, this is an underutilized parcel. It's been sitting vacant with no development on it, basically, since the dawn of time. If you're not familiar with it, it is the parcel where there's currently a billboard, and the city police tend to park there, which is good. Anyways, yeah, I thank you for your consideration. After looking, you know, when I first set out on this project, I really looked at the nature and the intent of the area. It, from my perspective, has more commercial qualities than it does residential. As a business owner in the city of Marquette, anything that I've done here, I've done to the best of my ability to be a very class act and a finished look, and I would surely do the same if and when I'm able to build a development. So thank you for consideration of the conditional rezoning.
Hi, my name is Vicki Moran. I live at four-sixty Stone Quarry Drive. I am the mayor's aunt, just to be out there. I have lived in that neighborhood for twenty-five years in the Meadows. I'd like to fill in a little information about that property that I found out as a member of the board. He said it's been underutilized. I guess that's people's opinions, but I know that the owners of that property, who owned it for a very long time prior to you buying it, chose not to develop that. They chose to leave the bulletin board there, or the billboard there, and earn money from it. One year, we were having difficulty with snow storage, and we called, as a board, to the person who was the owner, and she, being a nice lady, gave a lot of information about they didn't want to develop it now. They lived in Wisconsin, they had no desire to develop that, okay? They were getting money from the billboard, and they were happy with that. And when she died, her son would inherit. And this was about fifteen years ago now. She has since passed away. Her son did inherit the property, and it took until last year before he put it up for sale. They didn't want to build on that property because they were happy with what was there. When you turned it, changed this zoning to multi-use, it was a good thing because it does, it brings the neighborhood together. It's nice to walk to businesses, to talk to the owners of the businesses, to go to Piece Pie Company, to go to the compound. I love going to Merseydotes and buying things there. Even Mr. Fuller, when we have times when we need landscaping or snow plowing and things like that, we can walk down there, talk to them. This is not going to be conducive to that. It's going to be open while pass, when all of the other businesses will be open. They close at six o'clock. It becomes a quiet residential area, period, at that time. I appreciate that you want.
I'm sorry, you have to only talk to us, I'm sorry.
My niece. No, thank you very much, and thank you for waiting.
Do we have anyone else that would like to speak for the public hearing? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Larson? Or Commissioner, I don't care.
So following the public hearing, I would move to deny ordinance twenty-five-dash-thirteen, requesting to rezone seventeen hundred Division Street from mixed use to general commercial with conditional rezoning for the following reasons. One, the request fails to demonstrate that the existing mixed-use zoning and its adopted district intent are no longer appropriate at this location, according to LDC fifty-four-dot-three-one-one-A and fifty-four-dot-one-four-zero-five-D. Two, the request is inconsistent with the requirement that zoning amendments implement the Community Master Plan, LDC fifty-four-dot-one-o-two. The request does not satisfy zoning review standards related to the compatibility of the surrounding land uses and zoning, specifically LDC fifty-four-dot-one-four-zero-five-D eight and twelve. And then finally, that it introduces a commercial zoning district that is incompatible with and isolated from adjacent residential districts under LDC fifty-four-dot-one-four-zero-five-D twelve.
Kyle, did you get all that?
It seems like it's written down somewhere.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Gottlieb?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, so I think, I know that was very long, and I apologize, but I wanted the specificity to go along with it. So first, our, I think our resident, our Land Development Code, you know, requires that rezonings and even conditional rezonings, at least according to my understanding, you know, need to help implement the Community Master Plan. And this property here falls into the master plan with that South Marquette place type focusing on a walkable corridor, focusing on a walkable corridor with neighboring service, servicing activities, housing options, and buildings that actually meet the street. You know, according, so even reading through some of the Planning Commission documents, it was brought up that, you know, part of the idea there was to have a main street, you know, a bit of a village feel, a place where people want to walk, shop, and live. While it might not be that right now, I think the intent was to move towards that with the rezoning of this to mixed use. So on the zoning side of things, you know, the mixed-use district, as stated in the LDC fifty-four-three-eleven-A, is really to promote that combination of residential and compatible non-residential uses that serve that surrounding community, really meant to support that human-scale pedestrian-oriented redevelopment. Again, this was brought up, you know, a number of times within the, within the Planning Commission's deliberations, you know, even, even prior to doing that. And I think really that's the reason why the city in 2019 rezoned much of the Division Street to the mixed-use district, to really shift away from that solid, that solid commercial development that we have seen along those corridors, and really move towards something that's more of a neighborhood, of a, more of a neighborhood-focused and walkable. You know, taking a look at, you know, things, I don't know if self-storage facility really fits, you know, supports that direction of that intent for mixed use. You know, it has, while it may be low impact, you know, there's potentially little daily activity, you know, potentially blank facades, and, you know, kind of wide drive lanes and otherwise that might go into it. So that doesn't necessarily strengthen that corridor, at least in my mind. And then I think we also have responsibility to really look at the compatibility with nearby residential areas. Under LDC section fifty-four, fourteen-dot-oh-five, eight and twelve, we need to really consider whether rezoning introduces a district that's incompatible with what surrounds it. And, you know, in this, in this, in this location, the adjacent properties are zoned medium-density residential, mobile home, and then there's a PUD that's associated there as well. You know, this, this really adding general commercial back end here may create some sort of long-term zoning condition that allows for a higher intensity, you know, at a further time with other parcels that may want to do, you know, move towards rezoning with this, with this conditional piece. And I think, you know, finally, you know, I just want to thank the Planning Commission. I've been on the Planning Commission, I served on the Planning Commission for six years, and really going through it, you know, it's, it's a difficult thing to juggle, you know, the requirements of what the Land Development Code is, how, how the, you know, the state of Michigan laws work. And you really did provide that thoughtful review. However, you know, upon, you know, reading, it's really the City Commission's responsibility, you know, to make that final zoning determination. And so while I am voting, I'm moving to go against what your, your ordinance or what your recommendation was, you know, I think I prefer to stay in the direction that we've adopted in the Community Master, Master Plan, and so that's why, you know, I have reached a different conclusion on this. So thank you for sticking with me. That was a very long reasoning.
Commissioner Gottlieb?
Some of what I'm about to say is redundant because you covered it really well, but I do want to go through this step by step in my reasoning, and I apologize to those who may disagree with me. The Land Development Code, section fifty-four, fourteen-oh-five, the zoning ordinance amendment procedure states, "In considering any petition for an amendment to the text of this ordinance or to the official zoning map, the Planning Commission and City Commission shall consider the following criteria that apply to the application of making findings, recommendations, and a decision." Then twelve criteria are listed. And like Commissioner Larson, I truly appreciate the work of the Planning Commission, and I recognize how hard it is from my brief period with the Planning Commission, I was there only probably two years, and the thought that went into this specific decision, but I disagree with them on several criteria listed in the Land Development Code. First, master plan. That states consistency with recommendation goals, policies, and objectives of the master plan and any sub-area plans. If conditions have changed since the master plan was adopted, consistency with the recent development trends in the area shall be considered. I don't believe that this proposal fits with South Marquette typology as defined in the master plan. This area, South Marquette, is, in my opinion, served better, served being classified as mixed use and not as general commercial with conditional rezoning as requested. Next, point number five, change conditions since the zoning ordinance was adopted or errors in the zoning ordinance. That conditions have changed since the zoning ordinance was adopted or there was an error in the zoning ordinance that justifies the amendment. I do not believe there has been any changes in this area that warrants the proposed change. If anything, the area has become more residential and less commercial, thus rezoning to a medium-density housing or mobile home park might be more appropriate if a change is going to be made. Next, I have about three more to go, four more to go, sorry. Next, number seven, environmental features. If a rezoning, if a rezoning is requested, compatibility of the site's physical, geographic, I'm sorry, geological, hydrological, and other environmental features with the uses permitted in the proposed zoning district. I am unconvinced, after reviewing the Planning Commission documents, that the environmental impact has been adequately addressed. I realize this would be further addressed or could be further addressed later, assuming the City Commission passes the rezoning request by the Planning Commission in the future when it would be, when it would consider the need for a special use approval. Next, number eight, potential land uses and impacts. If a rezoning is requested, compatibility of all potential uses allowed in the proposed zoning district with surrounding uses and zoning in terms of land's suitability, impacts on the environment, density, nature of use, traffic impacts, aesthetics, infrastructure, and potential influence on property values. I am concerned that this rezoning would negatively impact the property values of the surrounding property owners. Next, number ten, alternative zoning districts. If a rezoning is requested, the requested zoning district is considered to be more appropriate from the city's perspective than another zoning district. This is similar to what I said when I first started this. I do not believe the proposed, the proposal fits with South Marquette typology as defined in the master plan. This area, South Marquette, is better served being classified as mixed use and not as general commercial with conditional rezoning. And lastly, point number twelve, isolate- And lastly, point number 12, isolated or incompatible zone prohibited. If a rezoning is requested, the requested rezoning will not create an isolated or incompatible zone in the neighborhood. The way I'm seeing this, rezoning would create an isolated zone. There are other properties in the area that have somewhat similar appearance, but they are zoned appropriately for mixed use, i.e. a professional office building, a vehicle repair shop, and light manufacturing. Furthermore, those entities have been there for a long period of time prior to the master plan update. With those thoughts in mind, I have, I do not think this fits the rezoning request and would, I am in favor of Commissioner Larson's motion.
Was that a recognition?
Yeah, okay.
I can talk. Okay, the previous two commissioners have been part of the Planning Commission and go into great detail about their thoughts on this. And I just, I'm going to give you a different take on it because Mr. Neme knows that I walk by there here a lot. Criteria 12, and Commissioner Gottlieb ended with criteria 12 about isolation or incompatibility. And that says that an incompatible zone cannot be approved. This standard, standard 12 was not met. You know, this neighborhood, we've known this neighborhood has been evolving for a lot of years, from commercial industrial to mixed use. And it was that recognition that the Planning Commission recommended to the City Commission in 2019 that that area become mixed use, which excludes storage units. And I respect that decision and that recommendation of the Planning Commission at that time. We've all driven by this property a lot. But I spent over an hour, Mr. Neme, you will appreciate this, I spent over an hour yesterday and I walked, my Apple Watch said I just spent 2.8 miles studying this property. I walked the perimeter, noted the stakes that I believe marked the 25 feet from the Billy Butcher Creek and the Orianna Creeks. I spent time standing in various parts of where the 100 storage units would be built. I stood across the road and on the other sides of the property envisioning what it might look like with the storage units there. You know, and Ms. McCormick, I kind of disagree with you because I believe that the residential starts on Furnace Street. So let me take you on a walk down Division Street south. Starting at Furnace Street, I counted 11 homes and then two small buildings that have been there for a lot of years. So standing on the property, I could see east to all of the condos in the core development and their windows look out over that property. To the north, the homes of the Meadow subdivision, I was appalled at how easily I could see into their backyards. And so I know that their backyards would certainly be looking at this. To the west, the trailer park, again, some backyards, to the trailer park. And to the south, the Shira subdivision. And there are three homes that would be, have a view of this development. It's only when I stood very close to the road that I could see one building, that would be the Fuller Building, and I could see the sign of the tax places. So, just the fact that I could look directly into those backyards, that I could see how people would be viewing this, it just, to me, is a, you know, just, this criteria just is not met. You know, it's a residential neighborhood and placing self-storage units among the homes would create isolation. It's unacceptable to the degree that it would create incompatibility and undesirable outcomes following development.
Thank you. Do we have any other commissioners? Commissioner Otte, or, okay, Pro Tem Schlegel?
Yes, I would like.
Thank you. I would like to see if, yeah, if Logan wants to answer any of these comments that have come up so far, if you feel like you'd like to defend any of these. But, and I will be honest with you, I'm giving you this opportunity because I think it's proper etiquette. But more importantly, you know, I see this, I think you guys have done a really nice job of laying out some very proper reasonings for declining this request. And I totally appreciate the work that the Planning Commission has put forth here. But back in 2015, when we did our first initial master plan revision, we had to go parcel by parcel down Division because of the way that it was originally zoned. And really take a very long and hard look at that thing. Boy, it was a miserable time doing that. But, point being, is that we recognized what was going on in South Marquette, what Division Street was transforming itself into, and appreciation, and appreciating why it needed to be rezoned and further being rezoned to mixed use in 19. So I understand, and I'm giving you the floor here for a minute to see if, you know, if you've got some stuff you'd like to throw out there and educate us as well.
I appreciate that opportunity. And so, something I wanted to clear the air on, first off, what you would actually see from the neighboring districts if I were to do a facility. They call it a fortress-style build, but essentially it prevents you from looking at or into the facility, so you wouldn't actually be able to see any of the units themselves. In terms of what could go there currently in the mixed-use district, there allows for certain currently light-duty manufacturing and other business capabilities that could go there. From my perspective, storage units are very low use. For example, the national average for per 10,000 square feet is three visits per day, which is less than a household. So it's very low traffic. The City Planning Commission in the new land development code outlines very well parameters for storage units to prevent them from, in my opinion, looking poor, as well as landscaping standards. So I appreciate your thoughts on this tonight. You know, from, again, from my perspective, I think it would be fitting for general commercial, but I thank you all for your considerations. Is there any questions for me?
Commissioners, do we have any questions before?
Yeah, absolutely.
Fortress.
Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry. A fortress-style build, so, yes, it's something that was done essentially with construction practices. So a fortress-style build essentially puts the outer wall at the edges. So instead of actually being able to see, for example, one of the complaints was, oh, what I see into somebody's storage unit or see what people are doing, essentially it puts all of the doors facing inwards. So from the neighbors, from all neighboring sides, the only thing you could possibly see is the rear of the building, which would have no lighting, no doors, in any sort of, does that make sense?
A brick wall. Correct.
Steel.
Steel.
Oh, yes, I mean, also full transparency, I haven't finished the full plan sets, but essentially the idea would be to look at a steel structure that would be designed with latest, I mean, most likely metal with stone facade feature on it.
Any other questions?
If I can just kind of finish up. Thank you, I appreciate it. I have a direct question for you, but, oh, boy. I guess that's pretty much it. I had something else, but it just jumped out of my mind, so feel free to move on. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Logan, for coming up.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Commissioner Otte?
Yeah, thank you. You know, it's, it's interesting to me, this is a very unique piece of property. I live in South Marquette. I live closer to the site than probably anyone that's on the commission. You know, ultimately, I, yeah, yeah. Ultimately, it's one of those things that, you know, as we, as we look at that site and we go back to 2019, when the master plan came about, and, you know, ultimately Division Street was, you know, general commercial pretty much everywhere. And it was rezoned to mixed use really to bring that, that neighborhood together. So my question with this is I've sat here pondering, you know, which, which direction this goes. You know, ultimately, what's changed since 2019? 2019, the master plan called to basically turn this into a neighborhood with small business and really kind of mix that together. I don't see how anything has changed in that time. And really, that's the number-one demonstration that I need to be able to get through to support, you know, changing this even on a conditional basis. So because of that, I'm in support of Commissioner Larson's motion. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I too struggled with this, mostly for the fact that in reading through the Planning Commission, I, well, I loved the deep, detailed dive you guys did and the notes that we get from, or the minutes we get from the Planning Commission, being completely transcribed makes it a lot easier to see where the trains of thought were coming from. So while I thank you for the work, there were multiple things that I also questioned whether or not standards were met, which is the hard part with zoning, when there comes to be having to make decisions based on what you see and how you interpret one of the different points. So I wanted to make sure that as I went through it, I was making it as much as I could with the planning state of mind, which unlike, is there four of you that were on Planning Commission on our, you were BZA, right? So we have a lot of planning background on this board, and I like to follow with what I see them doing here. And you guys were so detailed in your stuff, that motion was great, Commissioner Larson. So I also believe that I cannot stand for this, and I will support the motion made. Commissioners, before I move us to a vote, do we have any other comments?
With that, City Clerk, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Gottlieb?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Otte?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Schlegel?
Yes.
And Mayor Hanley?
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. This brings us to our consent agenda. Commissioners, do I have a motion on consent? Pro Tem Schlegel?
I would make the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Mayor?
Second.
Any discussion?
I don't have to know.
Okay, with, oh, you have discussion on consent?
Just real quick.
Yeah.
The Zamboni purchase, I won't leave it on consent, but that is amazing work.
I fully agree, getting a Zamboni fundraiser is an amazing thing. I do like that as well. Any other discussion on consent?
Just one quick thing, I'm very pleased that we were able to finalize the fire labor agreement and really congratulate all of the people that were involved in negotiations and making that happen so quickly. I'm glad to see that happen.
Any other discussion on consent? With that, City Clerk, may I have another roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Gottlieb? Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Otte?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Schlegel?
Yes.
Mayor Hanley?
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. This brings us to new business, the plow truck purchase. City Clerk, can you please read the background?
Thank you, Mayor. The Department of Public Works maintains eight snow removal routes and one sander route, each serviced by a dedicated plow. Two backup plows also support the fleet. Due to aging and excessive frame corrosion, two plows were retired last season. One was replaced with a used truck last spring. The second is slated for replacement in the current fiscal year. After evaluating multiple vendors, staff determined that a Peterbilt plow truck offers the best performance to price ratio and is the only manufacturer that can meet the height, width, and turning radius requirements that are necessary for Marquette's steep, narrow streets. Peterbilt trucks have historically performed well with minimal maintenance. The city will leverage its membership in the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program, similar to Michigan's My Deal program, to secure the truck through our regional Peterbilt dealer, JX Truck Center of DePere, Wisconsin. Delivery will be made to the local Peterbilt service shop in Marquette. This method is expected to yield a 20% savings off MSRP with delivery approximately seven months post-order. Fiscal effect, the Motorpool Fund capital outlay budget for fiscal year 2025-26 contains $265,000 for this purchase. Recommendation, authorize staff to utilize the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program to purchase one Peterbilt plow truck from JX Truck Center of DePere, Wisconsin at a cost not to exceed $265,000. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Otte?
I move to authorize staff to utilize a Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program to purchase one Peterbilt plow truck from JX Truck Center of DePere, Wisconsin at a cost not to exceed $265,000.
Do we have a second, Commissioner, or, sorry, Pro Tem Schlegel?
I'd second the motion.
Any discussion?
I mean, I'll keep it short. We need plows. Obviously, we had two that had been decommissioned. It's pretty simple. I don't think anyone can complain about us getting new plows. That's where we're at with the city at this point. Thank you.
Yeah.
Snow, bad. Plows, good. Got it. Thank you.
Wait time, bad. So that's, that's, we're being proactive here. We realize how far out these are being delivered, and it's just doing some, doing some heavy lifting of some snow. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I would like to discuss this just a little bit. I was lucky enough to get to go see our plow trucks today. I went and got a little special tour because I wanted to see the shape they were in. Because I understand that, well, we need plow trucks because snow bled, plow good. I want to make sure that we're spending the money that we have from city residents in the most appropriate way possible. In talking to them, I, and getting the background of, not only is this plow truck seven months out, but then it's six months of us working on it. Because getting them done to the specifications that we need it isn't a thing that we can do appropriately elsewhere. It made my eyes open a little bit wider to why we need to order it now. Because while we have enough plows to get through right now, if we were to get snow tomorrow, what if one of those breaks and then we don't have another backup? They also showed me the thickness of the frames on the ones that were decommissioned, which are unsafe. And we want to make sure our city drivers are safe. So I understand exactly why Motorpool made the decisions that they made to do that and why we're working forward on getting new plow trucks. I just always like to make sure that as we go forward and as we spend this money, we're spending it appropriately. The plow truck that we purchased in June, that is being fitted and made to city standards, is being worked on currently in, in the building, which was fun to see, a little scary, because I was like, that doesn't look plowy. There's no plow. But I've been assured that there will be a plow on said truck soon, which made me feel better. I didn't know if City Manager Karen Kovacs wanted to talk about this at all.
You know, if you don't mind, I do just kind of want to touch base on really what our strategy is for snow plowing. And we do have eight routes that each have a dedicated plow, and then we also have a plow truck, and then we also have a sander that goes through there as well. But I, it's important to say that we had enough of those, enough plows to cover all of those routes, and then we had backup plows. And we still have a backup plow for this, for this reason. And there are some other, you know, strategies that we're trying this, this winter with making sure that we can get things done in, you know, a shorter period of time and making sure everybody's getting plowed out of their driveways and getting onto where they need to be. But it's really important to note that we have things in place that when we do decommission these trucks, we have some backfilling there, and we're covering all of our bases while we wait for a new plow truck. The used truck that we do have is, that we are fitting right now, is being utilized as a plow truck for the winter. But then after we order another truck, then we can decommission this and make it a regular multi-use dump truck of some sort. So we had that in mind of future use for this used truck as well. And then also noting that we wanted to kind of separate the payments out here or the purchases out from these, so that we're not buying three used trucks or three plow trucks in one season, and making sure that we can kind of spread this out a little bit more. So kudos to Motorpool Department, our division, for really keeping our crews safe, keeping our city safe, and having functioning equipment.
All right, with that, I will bring it to a vote. All in favor, please say yes. Yes. All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven to zero. This brings us to our last public comment portion of the evening. As a reminder, public comment may not exceed three minutes per person. Please clearly state your name and physical address if you have not already done so at this meeting. Do I have anyone for public comment?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, come on.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Skakowski, firefighter, paramedic for nine years with City Marquette. I'm also Local 643's president. I just want to say on behalf of Local 643 and the members of Market City Fire Department, thank you guys very much, to all the members of the commission. I also want to say thank you very much to Sean, Suzanne, your guys' team as well, for negotiating with us and finding mutual agreement. I just want to say thank you guys for looking out for us. I think it's going to help a lot with, you know, recruitment, retention, and also too just, you know, supporting the employees of the City Marquette. So we just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else for public comment? You don't have to raise your hand, you can just come on up.
Sorry, my name's Paula McCormick. I live at 468 Stone Quarry Drive in Marquette. I'm just planting the seed here. About three, four years ago, I wrote a two-page letter, I think it was to the City Road Commission, I think, County Road Commission, City Road Commission? Because we do not receive city plowing on our street. And it must be a city ordinance or something because we're a foot and a half too narrow, I think, something like that. So we pay a fortune just from our street to get private road plowing when I really would love to have city plowing. So who, do they make the decision? Does the City Commission make that decision? Does the Road Commission make that decision? Do you change the ordinance? I'm just wondering. I'm planting a seed here.
We can only answer at the end of the meeting, so you'll have to wait until it's time for commissioner comment for us to respond back to you.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you very much.
Do we have anyone else for public comment? You don't, actually.
I just want to say thank you very much. My name is Vicki Moore, and I'm from 468 Stone Quarry Drive. Thank you very much for your decision on the rezoning. I'm in complete agreement that the multi-use, or excuse me, mixed-use is a much better designation for that lot. Thanks again.
Anyone else for public comment?
Hi, Jane Ficken, 226 West Hewitt. I'm a member of the Planning Commission. I want to thank you for your decision tonight, and especially for all your detailed reasoning behind it. I think that one thing we didn't do in our meeting, or, well, we talked about, we talked a lot about the history of the property, and like, what it had been before, and like, all the time that had passed. And I hadn't thought about how much thoughtful conversation had gone into rezoning it as mixed-use. So I really appreciated that you guys brought that tonight to the conversation. I think that made all the difference, so thank you.
Once again, Dan Neamy from 400 Stone Quarry. Thank you for doing the research. Thank you for caring. I know sometimes you don't always get the credit for the time and effort you've spent, but I appreciate you considering our side of this equation. And once again, that young man is a good businessman. He did a great presentation to us. So I know some of you have worked with him before, so it's not anti-him, it's, but what our area needs. So, thank you very much.
Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, public comment is now closed, which brings us to comments from the commission. And I'm going to start tonight with Commissioner Davis.
I have no comment this evening. I know.
Commissioner Gottlieb?
I do want to say, it's a bit intimidating, sitting here in front of people on both sides of a rezoning discussion. It was not a battle. Clearly, you guys seem to respect each other. But what was more intimidating for me is sitting in front of Steve Laurie, and Kevin Kluag, and Jane Ficken, and Dave Stenss, and taking a stand that might be opposite them. The Planning Commission is truly, is so difficult to be on the Planning Commission. It is so, into such minutia, that I think our job, my job now as City Commissioner, is so much easier than it was on the Planning Commission. So, thank you to the Planning Commission.
Commissioner Larson?
I know I already talked quite a lot, but I would just say that, I think within the Planning Commission's minutes, Steve, Steve had pointed out that, you know, change is hard, change to a neighborhood can be hard. So whether it was for, you know, taking a look at this and trying to consider what it would be like if a storage facility went in, that's definitely change. But retaining mixed-use, that also leaves the door open for, you know, development, whether it be a professional building, you might have something that has more activity, you know, there than you have right now. And so, you know, that land still is, it's still a zone of mixed-use. It could be moved, maybe it's housing, maybe it's a business, maybe it's something. But whatever it is, you know, change could be coming to that, to that, to that parcel. And what we hope, we hope that it sticks with that mixed-use, helps to achieve some of that goal of, you know, retaining some of that, helping change that area of town to a walkable, more vibrant, you know, sort of area. But as I think, again, Steve pointed out, you know, change can be hard, and trying to think about what, what fits right in that place. You know, I think, you know, we all just have to, you know, look out for that, and work together to hopefully, you know, see what solution actually fits.
Thank you, Mayor. That's, there's no doubt in my mind that Mike and I were on the, on the Planning Commission at, at almost the same time for a little bit, too. But it's really funny, because you're stealing my thunder. With the, you did it so well the first time with the motion, and then, and just right now. But the fact is, is that it's, it is mixed-use, right? So you can still look at a potential business that's going in there. That could be business on the main floor, you could have housing apartments, up to, you know, two, three stories. There's, there could be something, and Logan is a very, very smart guy, he knows what he's doing, don't be surprised if he comes back with something here in the very near future with, with another proposal. But, so, you know, be prepared, understand that, you know, today, I think, was very much the right decision, but there could very well be something else there. On a completely different note, I would like to announce that the Marquette Wintertime Dog Park at Tourist Park, which typically opens on the first of this next month, is going to be slightly delayed with some of the work that's being done out there. Hopefully not past, much past the 15th, because I've got a puppy that needs to run, and that's a great spot, we're very lucky to have that, that space to use for a winter dog park. I would encourage everybody that utilizes that to go in and pay for their fee, for their pass, make sure that their dogs are licensed, that they are up to date on their shots. It's 15 bucks for the license, and I think there might be a small fee for some of the other processing if, if they're not up to snuff, or maybe that's taken care of on their own when they go to the vet, I can't remember. But, point is, is in order for us to push for a summertime dog park, we need to be able to recognize how popular and how well-used our winter dog park is. And we don't, we don't see as many people getting their, their passes to use the dog park in the winter, as we certainly see out there, I can tell you that. I think last year, we might have had 70, I think 70 might be a little bit high, but it's 70 people, and I can guarantee you that there's well over, you know, 200, 300 people a day that are out there using that facility. So, at the same time, if anybody out there is really caring about what I'm saying right now, please be respectful of that, that property this winter, and make sure that you do clean up after your animals, and make sure that, you know, you're, you're bringing a, a dog-friendly dog to a, a place where it's going to recreate, and don't bring dogs that are afraid of humans or not comfortable with them to the facility, because obviously, it's safety first. So, that being said, I look forward to seeing you out there, and carry on. Thank you.
No comment, Your Honor.
Thanks for coming tonight, great conversation. You know, I'll speak to the Planning Commission as well. I think that, you know, on my time as a, as a Commissioner here, and then prior to that on the BZA, Planning Commission, as these guys have stated, you guys do such fabulous work for us. I mean, the City Commission sits here often, more times than not, and looks at the decision that the Planning Commission made. And we know, with, with all due respect, that you guys know what you're talking about, much more than most of the commission does, when it comes to things of planning. And it's, it's a great thing for this City Commission to, to have a resource like you. So continue working with the confidence that you do, know that you have all, you know, the backing of the City Commission. Just because we had one decision go against the decision that you made, doesn't make us respect you any less, and I think it's very important that you hear that. Because you're awesome. So additionally, going past that, get out and vote, guys. I believe early voting has started, am I right on that? Oh, great, I don't want to take your thunder, I'm so sorry. Get out and vote, we have, locally, we have two City Commission seats open, I believe we have a BLP seat open. These elections matter, they matter much more than anything else we do. Get out and do it, and I recommend early voting, it's so much nicer. I'll yield the rest of my time to the City Manager, and if she could also speak to Mrs. McCormick's question. Thank you.
Listen, I didn't bring her here. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. It was great to see everyone standing up. I know that I did a lot more research into planning than I have ever done before, and I also stand with Carrie, that this is a much easier job than the Planning Commission is. You guys look into very detailed, specific things constantly, and then bring those to us, and we can normally just brush by it and agree, because you guys are so detailed and wonderful in your job. And so this was a very difficult decision for you and for us, I believe. So it was a good glimpse into how hard it could be, if I was on the Planning Commission. So thank you to everyone on this board who has served in, on it, and everyone who's serving on it now. You guys are doing an amazing job. I also would like to take a quick moment to honor the life of Jack Rantinen right now. He was the lineman who lost his life on, on the county road this past week. His funeral is tomorrow. And I want to make sure that we all realize that this is a stark reality of how dangerous it can be for everyone working on our roads, or near our roads. And so to make sure you slow down every time that you are in a space where there's any construction whatsoever. Also, this will be my last meeting that I run as mayor, which is pretty exciting for me, and exciting for the, the future of the commission. It has been an honor to be the mayor, and I will still be serving as mayor until our next meeting, when we seat the new commission, and the commission chooses their new mayor. But I will not be running for that position. It has been a wonderful year, and I've been honored to serve the city of Marquette in this way. I am really proud of myself, because at this meeting, I did not all-in flavor once, which I have been known to do accidentally. So, good job for me. But thank you all for all the time on the commission, it has been wonderful. Thank you, I appreciate that. It has been an honor to work with this commission for the five years that I've done it, and I have one more year that I will get to enjoy working on this commission. So I will do that, sitting back and watching someone else leave the show. With that, I will send us two comments from our City Manager, and also, as Commissioner Otteway said, if you could please address. Thank you.
So, just to touch on early voting real quick, actually, early voting is starting here on Thursday. It'll be Thursday, Friday, Saturday, from 8 to 4, over at Peter Wright Public Library, so please take advantage of that. And then I, we will get updates, obviously, as we move through Tuesday, or Election Day, we will get updates, is what we have for counts. So, to touch on the question regarding Stone Quarry Road and the plowing for that, so Stone Quarry, Stone Quarry, wow, all-in flavor. Stone Quarry Road is considered a private drive, and is considered really that common element, which is a requirement through a site condo development. So it is a, a private drive that the City Public Works Department cannot plow. And some, sometimes we do have site condos and developments where the city can acquire or adopt those roads or that infrastructure into our system, but because it is a private drive, it required a common element for this development, and it's not necessarily a road that is built up to specs that is required by the city, then there's, there's no chance of us really taking that on. So, I feel, feel for you, however, this is something that is pretty, pretty straightforward on private drives. So, is that technical enough for you, or would you like the City Attorney to weigh in?
Well, the only other thing I was going to comment is, that is a decision the developer specifically made when he, he or they did that development, to not build that road up to city specs, and not have the city take that into the city system. And so that's not something that can be done after the fact, because it wasn't built in a manner that is required by the city. But again, it is also the common element of that condo project, and that was the developer's choice at the time that that was developed.
Anything else from you?
You know, it's really been a pleasure, you know, working with you, and, and driving down to Grand Rapids for MML, and all the things, but you've been a fantastic mayor, and every mayor that I have, have served with here has been different, and all of you have wonderful things. I really do appreciate your, your guidance and your leadership, so thank you.
Thank you. With that, we are adjourned at 7:19.